I call the order to the regular joint meeting of Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls Planning Commissions, and we'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy here, everyone tonight, please make sure your cellphones are turned off. Thank you very much. Okay. The two planning commissions work together on land use and zoning matters within the rural areas surrounding the city. That area is displayed on the map on the screen. After information and testimony is presented on an agenda item, the members will discuss the matter, and then each planning commission will vote independently to derive a decision. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit request will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of tonight's decision is filed in the county planning office by Monday, August 1st at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission and city council for a joint hearing on Tuesday, August 23rd, 2016 at 5:00 PM. When the joint agenda is completed, the city planning commission will adjourn, and the meeting will continue as the county planning commission considers items on the joint zoning jurisdiction. At this time, the planning commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes for the May 23rd and June 27th meetings are included on the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the planning members on the items listed on the agenda? Saying none. What we'll do now is I'll read each item on the consent agenda. If any member of the audience objects to the item, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission when that item is brought up. So we'll start with item one is the minutes of the May 23rd and June 27th. Item two is a conditional use permit to allow retail sales of fireworks. This is at the location of 400 South Ellis Road, just south of the junction of Highway 42 and Ellis Road. Okay, no objections to that one. A conditional use permit, now item number three, is to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 4,320 on the property, which is at 3720 South River Bluff Road, approximately one mile west of Sioux Falls. Okay, item number four, conditional use permit to allow storage units. And this is locations east of Sioux Falls. We initially read this one last week, last month, I believe, and this is, and we had to defer to this meeting. That is item number four. Any objections from the audience? You want to, okay, we'll bring that one up. We'll change that to the regular agenda, item number four. Okay, then we have number five, permit number 1648 to allow recreation facility, recreation facility, country fair on property, which is at 3720 South River Bluff Road, approximately a quarter mile east of Sioux Falls. Concerns on that one? If not, we will look for a motion to include item four. Without item four, we'll move for approval of the consent agenda on the county side. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second, although signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries.
On the city side?
So moved.
Have motion in a second, all in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved, moving item four to the regular agenda.
Okay, now we'll need a motion for the regular agenda to add item four and approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Okay, so moved by, back to you, second. Okay, we have a motion of second, all those signified by saying aye. Okay, the agenda is approved on the county side.
On the city side, you need a motion for item number seven on the regular agenda? Excuse me, item number four on the regular agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Regular agenda passed on the city side.
This time, then, we will move right to item number four. David, that is...
Good evening, planning commission. David Heino, Planner One, County Planning Department. Conditional use permit 16-45 is for a request to allow storage units on the property. As you can see right here, the map outlined in red. It's just off of, here's an extension of Plymouth Road. This is on the east side of Sioux Falls, just south of Arrowhead Parkway. Continue on, it's between Stokes, and then you have Hillside Drive, which is just to the east of the property. In addition, there's a 33-foot service road that runs along Arrowhead Parkway that is one of the access points to the subject property, in addition to the Plymouth Road access to this property, which runs along this eastern edge of the property. The request is for two, 2 30-foot wide by 250-foot long. As you can see, buildings two and three, the largest buildings. And then you have the building just to the north of that one would be a 30-foot wide by 190-foot-long storage unit building. These, as I mentioned, these permanently be accessible through Plymouth Ave, and then the existing service road to the north, so you have two access points there for utilization. Site plan does not indicate any plans for outdoor storage. Staff contacted the city Sioux Falls planning staff and discussed the conditional use permit request, and there was no issues from the proposed request for storage units at this location. Staff visited the property and did not see any issues with the proposed siding for the storage units in terms of access and other issues presenting and taking pictures of the site and going through that. Just some of the criteria that we go through in determining conditional use permits, criteria they affect upon the use and enjoyment of property in the surrounding area for uses already permitted and upon property values within the surrounding area. The majority of the areas surrounding the subject property is commercial land use, while a majority of land to the south of the property, let's go back here, is all existing residential development. So the commercial area is the extent which runs along this quartzite drive to Plymouth Road. Everything north is residential land use, and then, or, commercial land use to the north, and then residential to the south of that line there, where the subject property is. The area to the immediate south contains approximately over 40 single-family dwellings and existing residential subdivision. The lot immediately adjacent to the south does have an existing shelter belt of coniferous trees running along the property boundary all the way that connects to both roads, quartzite and Plymouth, right here. There is no, currently, there is no screening or trees or any materials. It's just, as you'll see in the pictures as I move forward, it's just bare grass right now. So the petitioner would be required to have some form of screening from the property that's zoned for rural residential, because this is a commercial land use right here. So that would be one of the requirements that we placed on, whether that was through a fence with that 90% opaque material or with live trees with a considerable height to cover the proposed storage units. The proposed use of the lot should have a minimal effect on property values of adjacent properties. The effect upon the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. As I mentioned, the subject property is already zoned for commercial, which allows for other things like retail, office space, personal services, and other warehousing type uses as permitted uses. Storage units is identified as a conditional use, hence the planning commission hearing. The remaining vacant properties, most of the area around the commercial area is mostly developed or currently being developed. The area to the south is vacant land that is zoned for rural residential. The proposed use, the proposed use as a storage unit facility should not negatively affect the normal and orderly development of the area, which has seen a historically significant pattern of commercial and residential growth just outside the primary economic growth area of Sioux Falls. The utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. The property, as mentioned, is currently accessed off Plymouth Road, which is a gravel driving service, and as well as the service road is currently, which is accessed from the gravel surface going all the way over to Hillside Drive, which does connect with the Arrowhead Parkway, which is a paved highway. Which that road was plotted as a 33-foot right-of-way for mainly just access to the property. The, in this case, the petitioner is not required to hard-surface the access off Plymouth Road, because it is not, according to the ordinance, it's not hard-surfaced, so they don't have to act hard-surface their, the driveway leading up to it off of Plymouth Road. The, which could lead to other things, less impervious surface, you know, allow water to drain naturally from the site, and other things towards the natural water course, as opposed to having that hard-surfaced, increasing the flow of water from the site. The, and then, so all the other facilities, as the petitioner has mentioned, is, are noted on the site plan, which are to be provided for the proposed storage units. Three that, or, four that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. Site plan indicates that there is enough space to accommodate for, so there's approximately about 25 feet in between these buildings to accommodate cars moving in and out for temporary unloading and loading of materials and other goods. No long-term permanent parking would be allowed at this site outside of the storage unit buildings. The measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. The proposed storage units, maybe by general nature, present noise concerns through the unloading and loading of procedures, but should not be at a level that would constitute a public nuisance to surrounding property owners. Surrounding area consists of other potentially intensive land uses, such as other repair services and warehousing, and other autumn over repair. The proposed use should have a minimal effect on adjacent residential and commercial properties. Lighting should be directed downward onto the property in order to mitigate any concerns from lighting spilling off-site. At a minimum, the property owner should be required to develop a landscaping and screening plan to help mitigate the potential visual concerns from surrounding property owners, as well as to the south for the residential property. Six, health, safety, general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. This proposed use is located in areas identified as the transition area in the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan. Primary goal of this area is to encourage new growth and development within municipalities or areas that are adjacent to municipalities where infrastructure will be available in the, for, in the near distant future. The proposed use is compatible with the surrounding land uses and should not significantly affect the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. And just going through some of the pictures that I took of the site, this is the indication of the plat, which shows the existing roads that are there. Plymouth Road is a 66-foot right-of-way. Hillside Drive is off in the distance. It was vacated, moved over to here to accommodate for the businesses there. And then, as you can see, the service road is at access to the property on the north side, so there's two access points. Let's get me forward. This is looking from Plymouth Road, looking north towards the site, as you can see, the taller grass in the distance, nothing on the site. There's no screening on the property currently around the boundaries. This is looking along, this is the existing business, repair service business, warehousing to the east of that Plymouth, or that easement along the property to access from Plymouth Road. This is Plymouth Road looking to the west, so looking straight west, or warehouse in the background, township facility, warehousing. That 66-foot right-of-way. This is looking north on that hillside drive down towards Arrowhead Parkway, existing businesses. And this is looking back towards, so this would go towards Six Mile Road to the east, about quarter, or less than a quarter mile that direction. This is looking off to the north. This is an existing shelter belt along where that residential property is on the other side of the trees from the subject property. So staff finds that the proposed storage unit facility is an appropriate land use for the surrounding area, consistent with the goals and policies of the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 16-45 with the following conditions: One, that CUP 16-45 shall allow storage units that the property shall adhere to the submitted site plan dated 5/24/2016. Three, that all signage shall be in conformance with Article 17 and 18 of the 2002 revised joint zoning ordinance for City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. A building permit is required for the installation of any signage. Four, that a set of plans be certified by a registered professional engineer, be submitted prior to the building permit being issued for the storage units. Five, that if mud, dirt, mud, dirt, dust, or other debris causes a nuisance to surrounding property owners, or is brought out onto east Plymouth Road, then the, then all driveways, parking lots, and outdoor storage areas shall be in conformance with the requirements of Section 16.04 of the zoning ordinance, which requires that hard-surfacing material to be placed on there. And there's multiple different options that the petitioner can do, crushed asphalt and other things. Six, that the applicant shall provide a 90% opaque screening fence or with live trees around the entire perimeter of the subject property. Seven, that a landscaping plan should be submitted prior to construction, and all landscaping be maintained in a live state, and all noxious weeds be controlled. Eight, that a stormwater pollution prevention plan and soil erosion and sediment control plan be submitted to the planning director prior to construction. Nine, that all outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and fully shielded design to prevent any direct spillage of light off the property. Ten, that the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the storage unit facility at any time after proper notice to the owner to ensure that the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit conditions of approval in the zoning ordinance. I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, David. Any questions, staff? Go ahead. Forgot where I put my questions. So the one property just to the west is actually where KSFY is moving their satellite dishes, right?
Yes.
Okay, and is there access to this property from Quartzite Road? That's the road that comes from the west? Or is it only from the southeast that there's access?
So this plat, image right here, this shows the access from the east, southeast, the property, and then...
There's no access at this point?
Correct.
And I guess the, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't show the northern part of this property as being anything constructed on that, is that right?
Yeah.
So nothing in the, above the white line where you are, nothing there?
Nothing here.
Place, is that right?
Nothing in this spot. This is the area that's delineated on the site plan for the storage units, what really...
Thank you. Any other questions, staff?
David, we, it does show what the dimensions of some of these buildings, do we know how many specific units are going to be in those particular buildings?
You can check. Petitioner, not clear on the dimensions of the specific bays, but in order to accommodate maybe just one vehicle, you can check. Petitioner can clarify on this in more detail.
Any other questions of staff? No? Not, we'll have the petitioner come forward.
Any questions from the city side? Thank you.
Petitioner, come forward, please. State your name and address.
Eric Willidson, Willidson Lund Engineering, 902 South Cleveland, Sioux Falls. Here representing the petitioner, which is Marv Addink. He is currently under purchase agreement to purchase the property from the current owner. Staff did a really good job of explaining what the project entails. Bonnie, I don't know, they're all like 12-foot-wide units, so how many ever fit in there? I'm sure with the 190-foot building, there's probably, you know, 40-some units a building, maybe the larger buildings, maybe a few more. A typical storage unit, they are the Trachsky Building. It's a national company that produces them. I have some pictures of what they might look like. It's not just a wood frame structure. They're pretty nice-looking buildings, metal buildings. But with that, I guess, like I said, staff has approved our site plan. One of the questions I guess I have of staff is, I thought there was, one of the conditions was that we screened the entire perimeter of this, and I guess I'm not sure that they should be required to screen against the dishes going up or the sides of the metal buildings next to us. I guess I'm, maybe I need a little clarity there. I asked exactly what the screening requirements would be. But after, and then, obviously, there are some adjacent owners or something that may have some questions that would just like to respond to, whatever they may have.
We'll bring you back if you have any questions.
Okay. Any other questions?
Why don't you address, if you, any other questions, this petitioner? If not, we'll have David address the screening issue, and then we'll have anyone else in the audience.
So the screening, the ordinance states that it requires the commercial and residential property, building property to be had screened at some point. Whether that's 90% opacity or if that's live trees, that's the requirement. Staff is requiring screen all the way around the facility, just the sort of thing.
So they can't plant trees around the perimeter, not just a fence, 90% opacity is what you're saying, then?
Correct.
Okay.
If I get this straight, commercial would have to screen against commercial?
Commercial and residential.
Or commercial would have to screen against the residential? So if there's commercial property next to us, we're not required to screen against them?
It's not, correct, it's not required by the ordinance. The ordinance states, commercial and residential, there has to be some form of screening. It's based on high side, different elevations.
Yeah, we're... Meaning going to the south there, towards the Harz property, the residential, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. So we won't have to hide the driveway with trees?
We're some 20 feet below that property line with where we're doing these, so, but certainly, if there's a screening requirement, we, I'm sure the owner would comply.
I got a question, Eric. What's the issue? Why do you have a gate there between Lot 2 and 3, in the, I call it the north, northeast corner of the lot, property?
Certainly, it'll be, the storage units themselves will have a security fence around the outside of those units as they stand now, and then there would be an access gate, assuming like a kiosk or something for the people that should be there to get in and keep out people that don't rent there.
Okay, but basically, they're supposed to come in from east Plymouth, right? There should, they shouldn't even have to worry about that other...
There's also an access drive. As staff indicated, there's a 33-foot access road adjacent to the highway that's also an access to this property, and there could or would be a driveway access on that as well. It's there.
So it said, east Plymouth is the primary?
Primary, exactly, but there could, there certainly is two ways in and out of this lot. There is that 33-foot access right-of-way adjacent to the property that comes off of the highway on Mr. Iggy's property and crosses across the front of it in the easement, and then he could access up through that northern lot. So I think there will be two ways in and out.
Will they both have the security feature then? And I mean, is that what the primary is intended to mean?
My understanding is yes, they would be.
Will they both be provided with the security access?
Gate there, and a gate there.
Correct.
Any other questions of the petitioner? Not, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe perhaps bring you back up later, but right now, anyone else in the audience? Saw a few hands go up, or have we answered your questions? Come up, state your name and address, please.
Todd Iggy. Owner of the lot number one, J. Iggy Automatic Service, 7101 East Arrowhead Parkway. I don't want to...
Side of this property?
On the east side. I don't want to be lengthy. I do have some stuff I prepared. It looks like a lot. You don't have to read it. If I can hand you a moment?
Go ahead. Thank you.
Pass it down.
Sorry.
I do have some concerns. You can probably see from the site plan. I'd just like to say that I'm not against the idea of storage units, as storage units themselves. There's a lot of worse things I could see come. Or KSFY, I enjoy that entity too. Anyway, I do have a concern on the drainage study, as you can probably see, a lot of this unloads towards my direction of my business. The entire area will cover over one acre. The buildings, the hard surface of the gravel on that, surrounding those buildings, it'll run right to the backside of my building and the corner of my property. A drainage study, I think, would be appropriate if we could just address that. I'm not looking for a holding pond to attract standing water. Just, the other concern I have of that is to more property owners to the east of me, and in the corner, the southeast corner, there's an electrical box in the ground that could get a lot of water against it, just a fact I thought I better point out there. The other part, I think I can shed a little light with the packet that I gave you. You'll see that over the last three years, myself and my wife were tied into a civil court case about the 33-foot access road Jeff brought up. And the last year, the city, and the township, and the county were included in that civil action. Simply put, you'll see that in the course of that whole proceeding, that the reason that that 33-foot access became available to Mr. Bostman is that he denied himself access from Lot 2 to Lot 3 or vice versa. He testified with his counsel that he could not access one from the other. That is why Judge Pecus granted him access with that 33-foot road for access purpose, because it is stated in the law of analysis on page five, line number three, it is the only access. Giving that, to clarify that, in short, that is the whole reason you've got a 33-foot access at the north end, you've got a 66-foot access at the south end. The site plan doesn't show anything of a 24-foot-wide public service road whatsoever. I can't see what those things said, that we should have a continuous drive through these two. Again, it was from the original testimony of Mr. Bostman and his counsel that allowed him to have the service road. If something other than that should transpire, I'd like you to give that serious consideration, the fact that it was brought along with the county and the city. And if so, we probably need to name some streets. Would be the bottom line I would have in suggestions for that. Last but not least, I brought this forward to the county planning a time or two, and the last thing I have on that 33-foot access road is the liability that presented there. Mr. Bostman himself afforded that. The county did not put that road in. That's all of my concerns. Thank you.
Just, I have a question for you.
Yep.
Questions of Mr. Iggy, yes?
Todd, isn't that new road that, that has now been, I don't know, gravelled or whatever, that actually comes off your driveway off of Arrowhead though?
It does. My driveway, my driveway is my business. Pre-existing on a conditional use permit that I was given in 1994. That driveway was there before they plotted the service road. The fact that the service road was vacated to the west to Stokes Avenue, this was the only thing left, was to use what I was told by the DOT at one time was a private drive. But, you know, I've learned otherwise, I guess, in regards to that.
So through all this procedure, then, this is now a public drive?
It's...
That's privately owned?
The county accepted it partially. They weren't going to put it in. It's privately owned on public property. You make sense of that?
Any other questions, Mr. Iggy?
I have another one.
Yes, go ahead.
That means that anybody that wants access to that particular road, which is really your driveway, so that if there are heavy trucks going in up to the storage area... That means that anybody that wants access to that particular road, which is really your driveway, so that if there are heavy trucks going in up to the storage area, they have to go in through your driveway to get onto this thirty-three foot.
Correct, correct. And the, the access road that I've seen started, it's not hard surfaced yet, I've been told it has to be hard surfaced because it comes off a hard surface, will be fifteen feet wide.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'm sorry, don't want to interrupt those guys.
No, we were just saying bless you.
Oh. Where, how should the drainage work in the, coming off of that lot? Should it go north towards Highway forty-two or should it go?
It, it naturally at this time stands to, to flow to the east, northeast, comes on the backside of my building and.
Towards that electrical transformer?
Correct, yeah. And I'm not saying it won't be addressed, but it's right, it's right there.
Just wondering where it naturally went, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions, Mr. Aggie? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If someone else wanted to address this, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Joe Aggie, my residential address is two oh five North Leaders, but I'm Todd's son. So I also work at seventy-one oh one, East Arrowhead Parkway. And I'm also the second assistant chief of Split Rock Volunteer Fire at seventy-two oh one, East Arrowhead. So having said that, one of my main concerns is safety with that access road. You're making, it's just slightly more than a hundred and eighty degree turn if you come from the city, from a fifty-five mile an hour stretch. You get large vehicles in there, they're not going to make that turn, they're going to back up, someone's going to get killed. I don't want to deal with that. It's a lot of paperwork. But the safety concern, the pictures that were shown here, they, they don't really give justice to like the terrain out there. As Eric was saying, there's a twenty foot drop from Plymouth down to the building site. You get snow and ice, you know the weather around here, you got more liability and safety of the travelers. There's another guy that couldn't be here tonight, Don Scovely, he owns the Bullseye Cabinet at Plymouth, like just at the southeast corner. He asked me to voice about the security. And as it sounds, the security fencing is going to be in place, but everybody knows that people can jump and people can climb. You're going to get more people out there. We already have a rash problem of vandalism, people, we had someone break into our building last year. People siphoning gas out of cars, and it's more of an attraction. That, oh hey, there's, there's more places, let's, it's secluded too, you get back there. You could pop a lock off or something and everybody's going to lose everything they got in the storage unit. Then to continue, my last point would be the quality. And as the pictures that Todd provided you with the thirty-three foot strip, the quality has already taken effect on Todd's business and his property value. Because that looks like complete garbage, to be honest. And there's no weed maintenance, I mean, I know it's young, it's fresh, but he's not doing a damn thing to make it look good for Todd's business. Before this whole thing came up, Todd and myself, Joanne, we all maintained that area, kept it mowed, spent money on Green Forever. And from what Mr. Busselman's used it for, there's no quality to it. Then to continue on down the road, is this quality of that road that's existing now, is that portraying the quality that he's going to do with the rest of the road? Or with the land? I know, like they said, it's pending sale. But it all comes down to Mr. Busselman. If we go back to last month's joint planning thing, that Gary was the petitioner and now it's changed over to Marv, what? Altogether, I just don't see the quality withholding up to, you know, a decent, not being an eyesore.
So is Mr. Busselman supposed to maintain this road as far as mowing?
That's where it comes down to liability too. As Todd was saying. Who's, he puts the road in, the county's not paying for it, who's liable for it? Whose duty is it to maintain? And I would assume that since he fronted the money, he paid for it, he's liable for it.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Aggie? If not, thank you very much. If someone else in the audience wants to address this, please. State your name and address, please.
Josh Payers, sixty-six ten, East Split Rock Circle. My question has to do with, I believe that's the south end of the property. And they talked about maintaining screening of the ninety percent opacity. And is there going to be a gate there? Because they're saying there's no other access besides that road and the one that the Aggies had just addressed. But there's an approach to the top part of that property that gets used, is that going to be utilized or accessed?
Can you answer that, David?
I didn't see it in his pictures or described or detailed.
Does it show it on that diagram?
Gate right here.
Right there at the top, there's an approach off a gravel road that goes in there, it goes between the barbecue guy and the property that, the warehousing thing that you talked about. At the very top of that, there's a garbage company and then there's an approach that goes down in there, are they going to utilize that as a road as well?
That's the KSFY.
Okay.
Oh, that's the KSFY slot, is what he's talking about?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, that will be fenced there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. You want, any further comments? Okay, once you come forward, if there's no one else in the audience, we'll have the petitioner come back up, answer any rebuttal questions. And then we will close the floor and for discussion and action.
Certainly just a, a quick point of clarification, the property is still owned by Mr. Busselman. My client, which is Marv Addink, is under contract to purchase the property if, and you so choose to approve his conditional use permit. Obviously, if, if you don't approve his conditional use permit, he's probably not going to purchase the property from Gary. I don't know what all went on through the court cases in the past, and I don't think Mr. Addink does either. But the way he understands it is he does have an access off Highway forty-two and it is not across Mr. Aggie's property. It is in the public right of way, which is the driveway approach to that property, but then it veers off and goes to the, back to the west and accesses this property. So there are literally probably hundreds of miles of private road in Minnehaha County that is in public right of way. And when I say public right of way, it is the public has the ability to use those roads, they are for the public. But they are maintained privately. Any number of subdivisions in this area, including this one, have public right of ways with privately maintained roads. The township, the county, they don't maintain the roads in this subdivision. And it's up to the property owners, whether they're homeowners associations or just agreements between people to, to maintain the roads. I, I believe it's Mr. Addink's understanding that the Plymouth Road access and the thirty-three foot access adjacent to forty-two are the accesses to this property he's looking at. And they were essentially mandated by the courts, my understanding, I'm not an attorney, I'm an engineer. We'll certainly address drainage concerns with the site plan. If we need a detention pond, there's an area on the far, in that little triangle shaped piece on the east corner that we've kind of reserved as a place that we can do detention and then release water at the same rate it's being released now. Those are calculations we can make and, and those are, are site plan issues. Certainly, we'll do that. As, as David indicated, the plan needs to be stamped by a licensed engineer and, and before I stamp that, I would make sure that we're in accordance with Minnehaha County's design standards and regulations. And, and we'll address those drainage concerns, but the natural drainage is the direction of flow. With that, I guess, if there's any other questions, again, the property is changing hands. So what's happened in the past, I'm not sure we can put that on Mr. Addink to say that he wouldn't maintain a respectable establishment. And maybe with some additional development and some more lighting out there. Again, we, we hope, I would assume Mr. Addink would hope that he gets the same level of security from the sheriff's department that anyone else out there gets. So with that, if there's any other questions, I'd, I'd be happy to address.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I think we've heard from everything, we'll close the floor, thank you. And county discussion, motion, action?
I think there are some safety issues there with this road going off high speed and making a sharp turn like that. And I guess I do have some questions about the ownership and maintenance on this road. Bonnie, do you know about this lawsuit from before?
I do know some, okay. I know the Aggies as well.
Of course, we all do.
You know, I can't say what will happen because it, it will be under new ownership if this does come to effect. I am concerned about the drainage and, and doing a study there, no doubt about it. I am, I'm concerned about the security there. And I've had, I mean, I live out, not too far from that area anyway. That new thirty-three foot road that they put in there is not a typical road, folks. There is no way that you're going to be coming off the highway like it is onto a driveway, which is actually a personal business. I mean, that's my, that's what I know of what that is there, and it's been there forever. To try and get onto this thirty-three foot road to get into that particular property to get to those storage facilities, that concerns me. There's nothing that Joe says, it's a huge safety thing there coming right out of the highway, there's no doubt about that. As for the maintenance in that area, that is all Split Rock Township there, all the gravel roads, even in industrial area. At least up to the point of where the property lines are, then it's up to the individuals. Maintenance out there, I would hope that, that, you know, if this comes down or if this new owner, and I think Todd might have had a conversation with him, I don't know even know who he is, that, that he would be courteous enough to make sure that the things are mowed and that, that it would look in, you know, I mean, I mean, there is this, there's a special thing that, that you should have a courtesy to your neighbors to make things at least attractive enough that they should be kept mowed and taken care of.
Does a snow removal out there then on that road?
Township does do.
Township does do a snow removal?
Not that one.
On the thirty-three foot one, on the thirty-three foot one.
That would be, that would be a pri- what I would consider private. And that means that would be up to whoever the landowner is.
I've always done it.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not, yeah. But that would be between, you know, you and the owner, depending upon who would or wouldn't do it.
Okay, any other comments?
Ms. Chair?
Yes?
I, I actually like the project as far as the buildings going in there, I think this is a reasonable use for, it's not going to be a thousand cars coming through every day. And I think that a storage facility there would be, you know, quiet, et cetera. I, I do just have concerns about the access and I do believe the drainage can be solved. But I'm a little worried about high speed access coming off of forty-two. And I think that can be solved as well, but I guess I'd like to see more of the solution before I vote for it.
And you want them to come up with that resolution, like the single access to the east side or?
I don't know, I, I wonder if I could ask Mr. Willetson.
Willetts, you want to come back?
Eric, I always like it when you bring a project forward, but what can we do about, about that road situation?
Jeff, when you're, when you, when you speak about this high speed access, are, are we talking about people turning off the highway into Todd's driveway? I mean, they're, obviously he runs a business there right now, they're doing it now. You come in that driveway and then turn, you know, so you're off the highway before you turn to go up this access road?
So you don't see that as an issue?
I really don't. I, you know, I would think as, if, if it was my property, I would rather have an access off the highway, but DOT has said, no. We're not going to allow another access, we have this extra thirty-three feet, so we're not going to grant another access to this lot. So this is the only option really to, to, to grant an access. I don't see it as a, as a huge issue, I don't know if, if Todd's experienced rear end collisions or accidents coming in. Maybe he can address that over the years that, I mean, his business has been there for umpteen many years. Or, or any of the other points, Hillview Road or, or, or any of the other, the fire station or to the, to the other access points that are, you know, have, do we have a history of accidents? And, and again, this is a storage facility, it's not a twenty-four seven store. I mean, it is going to be a very limited type, type access. So.
I would hazard a guess that eighty percent of the traffic is going to come through that driveway because it's off the highway. But that's just my guess, you know, who knows?
Like I said, I think whether they're turning in to go to, to Todd's business or turning in to go to their storage unit, they're turning in that driveway approach. Will it increase the volume? Yes. Will DOT give us another access? No. So do you say you can't develop your property? To me, that, that's not fair. And we have a second way in and, and some of the traffic will undoubtedly use that second access.
Wasn't that stated that that was a primary, primary access originally? And this thirty-three foot stretch would be the secondary?
And you can say that all day long, I think, Doug, but can you control which one people are going to use? There's not going to be a sign that says primary access and secondary access, I don't, you know, that's, they're both access points. And like I say, I think you turn in the driveway and whether you're going to Todd's business or you're going to then do a U-turn or whatever and, or an S-turn and go up this service road, I don't think at that point, the impact to the, the traffic on, on forty-two is effective. And if it becomes a problem and a safety issue, that's a problem for DOT to look at and to look at the speed limit.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else from the city?
I have, I have a question. You know, I'm, I'm reading this and it does say that Plymouth Road will be the, well, primary access point. Primarily accessible from Plymouth Road and then I see the list of ten conditions, you know, that have to be met. And they speak to if there's problems with driveways, the applicant should provide ninety percent opaque screening fence or with live trees around the entire perimeter of the subject property. You know, the lands, the, the stormwater issue or the drainage, I think, is spoken to here as far as the requirement that a plan be submitted. As well as the landscaping plan, addressing the noxious weed issue and live plants. You know, it seems like we got a lot of conditions here, are, are they all upholding what the concerns are? As we've just discussed them. Now, does anything change if something's not a primary access point, but it's either or? And these other items, you know, I think we need to be clear what they mean because they have impact on the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I just have one question for the gentleman that was the assistant fire chief?
Yes, the younger, okay.
Okay, yes, the younger one.
Okay, yes, the younger one. Fire, if there's a fire there, how are you gonna access that?
Well, I mean, you're gonna go with...
Based off the two driveways that they've got?
With the buildings they got there, and with the terrain and the turns and everything, obviously, we're gonna come up the gravel road.
You're gonna come up the thirty-three footer?
Off the sixty-six footer.
Okay.
Off of Plymouth.
But he's got a twenty-four foot driveway, though. Once you get in there.
Yeah, and that's what I was saying earlier with the terrain and the, you know, you get a little bit of ice or something on that, and I'm trying to put a sixty thousand pound truck down there and then in and out with other trucks. But I don't wanna talk on behalf of the fire department, I, if you do have questions, I can answer them.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
What, can I say one more thing?
Yes, quickly.
What, uh, Marv was saying with, well, if, if something does happen, then that's a DOT's problem. Why would we as citizens of the county allow for something bad to happen before we do something? Why don't we prevent it? You know, do you want your wife or your kids to come up over the, on the highway and plow into the back of a semi that didn't make the turn? Let's be a little proactive about it.
All right, thank you. All right, now the floor is officially closed, and we need action, one way or the other, people. A little bit further discussion, but we need to move on.
Mr. Chair, I guess, uh, on item six of the conditions, I, I think that, uh, we take the word entire out of it and put, uh, residential, uh, residential permit, uh, I mean, perimeter. Is that fair?
Part of your motion, that's fine, there's...
Otherwise, I'm, uh, still waiting for wisdom from Bonnie, Doug.
It's always hard to put a condition on something that's off a major highway. I don't disagree. I, I've looked at that road, too, and it, it scares me, there's no doubt about it, coming off forty-two there. I'm wondering, I, I don't wanna reiterate what Todd, uh, what Todd or what Joe says, but, you know, we beat this up against the wall, and you know what, somebody's killed out there? What do you do then? Is it after the fact? We didn't look at it strongly enough to see that they can't get in off the highway, they gotta get it off a driveway that's a personal business, just to get a three, three-foot right-of-way road? I, the curve there is unimaginable to me. I mean, I've driven by there a couple of times, just thinking, God, I don't even know how they're gonna make the curve to get in there from the front side, okay, off the highway. You know, the DOT has that rule for a reason, folks. Don't make any access off a major highway. But yet, here we're gonna do this with a small road that needs access to do a property? I, I, that's still...
The access is already there, right?
Yeah, well, it is through his business, yeah, through his business, his approach.
Sounds like it's a public access right-of-way, which is what the DOT is saying, so, I, I think, we, if we, if we set in the conditions, he has to put another approach onto forty-two, the DOT would say, no. I mean, we don't have any authority over that, so I think we might be spinning our wheels on things that don't actually apply to a conditional use permit.
You know, if, uh, we were to approve it and it got appealed, there would be certainly, uh, time for the county commission, uh, to look into this further. I, I really would like our county highway engineer to, uh, take a look at this, uh, either way, uh, before we, uh, make a final decision on it. You know, he's a professional and, uh, would be able to, uh, you know, make a guesstimate, at least, on, on what would be the right solution there. But I don't know if, if, uh, that would require, uh, deferring action here or approving it and allowing it to be appealed.
By approving it and allowing it to be appealed, that would, like you say, gives them enough time till Tuesday, August, Monday, or, Monday, August first. At that time, I mean, it's not two weeks.
But before the next month is there, then, uh, you know, and maybe what we should do is defer action, uh...
It's entirely up to the commission.
Don't you have an opinion, Mr. Chair? Usually you do.
This is tough, like I say, I just happened to witness a car accident at an open house on Highway eighty-one, up by Watertown this weekend.
I'm sorry.
Things happen so darn fast.
Yeah.
And just because somebody was looking at the signs, they're looking where they were going. Unfortunately, nobody got hurt, but, uh, two vehicles were totaled. So it was a pretty substantial little smuck. So they, and I, and like young Mr. Aggie said there, making a hard right turn. That's...
That's sixty-five miles an hour.
Pulling the trailer, and trailers about at least ten percent of the lights don't work on, it seems like.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to defer action on this for a month, and I will, uh, get the resources of our highway department to look at it, and they certainly have connections with the, uh, state DOT. I would also say that, uh, whether or not we do it now, that we need to change that, uh, condition number six, so that it says residential perimeter.
So your motion is?
To defer for a month. And, uh, I'd be glad to work with, uh, both sides on, uh, figuring out a, a solution for everyone.
I'll second that.
Motion to second to defer. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries to defer. Action on the city side.
On the city side. I need a motion.
Move the motion that was adopted here.
To defer. Have a motion to defer.
Yeah, that's your motion, go ahead.
Lack of a second, please.
Yeah. For lack of a second, it fails, so...
Alternative motion.
Give a motion, then.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve.
I second.
A motion to approve and a second, uh, discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I don't see access as an issue that the planning commission has any control over. I think we're penalizing the applicant on something that, even if we tried to take action on it, we would have no authority and we'd get trumped by the DOT as to what they say. So I think we're penalizing him by delay.
Agree with that.
Any, any other discussion? All right, uh, seeing none, I need a motion, uh, the motion has been to approve, item number four, all in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries on the city side, three, one.
Okay, so that means if it's a split decision, it goes before the joint county and city?
You guys can move the motion to adjourn, if you want, or, otherwise, you can decide to split. Otherwise, you're gonna leave flat, and it's automatically referred to the county.
Referring to the joint county-city. And that's August twenty-third, which is basically a month.
Well, our next meeting is the twenty-second, but yeah, they're gonna be the twenty-third, I believe.
Fine, as it is, we'll let it ride. Or someone else?
We'll let it ride.
Okay. You let it stand? So that concludes the business of the joint, city-county, correct? Is that our last item?
Mr. Chair, I do have one item. I need to apologize to the public, 'cause I was the one that didn't get this done last month. There was, uh, a work emergency, and I left my phone sit and didn't get out of it, so I am, apologize that we, we've gotta go another month on this, so, uh, like I said, I wanted to make sure everyone knew that it was me that actually pushed it off for the month. So, with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, before they adjourn, I have a point I'd like to make, if I may. How about, uh, removing the word entire perimeter and replacing it with residential perimeter?
I assume that was part of my motion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I need a motion to adjourn. Got a motion, second? Got a second? All in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Give them a minute to leave, and then we'll start on the county side.